Right.
Here.
Three, here. Come, here. Brennan, here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Come, here. First item on the agenda is the Joint Review Board Representatives from mid-state. The Kusa School District, Wood County regarding TIF one dash four with John Traumman and CP from Kristen Larson. Take over then.
Joe, I think you gotta be some, some order, like take, take role and you gotta sign like a secretary or something to take notes, I believe.
Okay. The Kusa School District has Lynn, Lynn, okay, she's Lynn as president. Lynn Knight, right?
Yes.
And a GHT.
Correct.
Okay, let's stay, Rob.
Greg Rockpower.
Help me out a last name.
B as in boy, R U C K B A U E R. Here.
Doesn't go to schools. Who's gonna be our rep for, for the city? Make a difference. Larry, you wanna be?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I sent an notice out to Jason, evidently he didn't make her tonight. There's nobody from Wood County here.
Can Brad do it?
What's that?
Can Brad do it?
As a board member.
Put me down.
Okay, we'll put you down, Brad, and we drop the little six. Can I be at Wood County?
No, it's just a.
Can you be a dual role?
Just one as a member.
Nick's on, if that's appropriate. Nick, is that okay? Nick, are you there?
Yeah, I'm just working on, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, what was the question?
We don't have a representative from Wood County, but Brad's a board member. Can he be a dual role?
I mean, he's here in his capacity as a county council member first, isn't he?
I have to be or we don't have a quorum. I was gonna say if we had a quorum without me, I'd say take me off that, put me on this county.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with it. Whatever you want.
That would be, that would be my only, I guess that would be my only concern is that he's kind of wearing two hats. But in terms of, he doesn't need to vote on anything as, as a county rep, does he?
No, it's basically an informational meeting, a joint review board meeting, just to simply go over the current update of the TIFs, that's it. And steps are required, so.
That's what I thought, yeah. It shouldn't be an issue then, as long as he's not voting in his capacity representing the county, I don't think.
Lynn and Greg, now do you have a copy of the TIF summary?
Yeah.
You do?
Yes.
Our topic, try to be real good. Okay, um, on our webpage, I've loaded in that plus all the other goodies. You seen that on the packet? So I know that we're trying to cut down on paper and stuff, so. We've got our membership present for this point review board for TIF. Mr. Traumman, would you like to please give your presentation on performance levels and everything with this TIF one through four?
Absolutely. Again, this is obviously a required meeting, annual meeting to have, just to simply update for 2020 and the, the status of the TIFs. So I'll just kind of do it in order in, in the packet if you're following along. It starts with TIF one, statutory termination date, August 12th, 2024. The next page is I really provided all the years' activity since inception of the TIF, which was 1997. You can page through there and I won't go through each one of those years because they were covered in the past. But if you turn to the last page of TIF one, you'll see the 2020 year, so you can see 2020 brought in 208,163 of tax increment. Had additional intergovernmental revenue of $538, an expenditure of 2083, of course, this is in the, the five-year period of time. So there isn't a whole lot of expenditures, no project costs, it's kind of winding down here to 2024. The fund balance in the fund as reported in the financial statements, 1,950,835. The, the cumulative net unreimbursed project cost to date is 1,541,255 dollars. Again, projections there on the bottom of how that's going to look for 2021 to 2024, subject to change, obviously, on what happens in 2021 to 2024. TIF number two, statute of termination date of July 13th, 2029. Again, this started in 2002, can see all the, the comparative data revenues and expenditures going by all the way from 2002 to 2020, $150,000 tax increment. Again, that's the only revenue at a small project cost or, or expenditure, 1,730 administrative expenditure. Fund balance as reported in the financial statements, 1,708,615. You can see the unreimbursed project costs in the green there, cumulative 4,197,176 as of the end of 2020. Obviously, termination date's 29, so quite a few years left. So those projections are not, not too valid at, at this point, still got nine years left of that TIF. TIF three, March 29th, 2032 statutory termination date. Started in 2012, can see the activity from 2012, next page to current date, 2020, or audited 2020. Tax increment 112,061, exempt computer aid, 12,375, personal property aid, 5,738. And then a miscellaneous 8,305, administrative cost 1,00960 as an expenditure. Fund balance at the end of the year 2020 for the financial statements, 474,560. Net unreimbursed project costs, 474,559. TIF four, statutory termination date, March 29th, 2032. Started in 2018 and we have 2020 there. Apologize for the 21 column that, that should, should not have printed there, but that is printing, so disregard that. Tax increment revenue, 12,375, your first increment came in, $3,000 sale property, administrative costs and project costs, $13,317, a fund balance deficit of 17,512 for the financial statements. And an unreimbursed project costs equaling that, $17,512. Any questions on any of the TIFs as presented? Certainly any discussion items I'd be happy to take.
When TIF one, when that expires, that's something that can be kind of like rolled over into another one or.
That would, that would take to extend or do anything like that would take joint review, review board and action. So as of right now, that is not.
Not on the cards.
Not on the cards at this point.
Right.
Any other questions from the council? Then that would be the end of the.
Okay. That concludes that and I, I thank Lynn and Greg for attending this meeting. You like short meetings, right? Yeah, that's, that's good. So you got your hand in it, all right. Yeah, well, thanks, thank you very much. Good night.
Any else wants copies of these? You got them on your iPad, so I'll just take them back.
Well, it's always good to be.
Pay too many.
Lots of times something happens and then, and then we cause issues, so. Yeah. Okay, so next item is the DNR Clean Water Fund Loan Approval for the Highway 173.
Wood Avenue. Project.
And Mayor Carlson, we have that bullet point and then the fourth and fifth bullet point are tied into that same item. And so I don't know how we want to conduct the approval of it, but we have a number of documents that, that were proving as part of the overall package. As everyone understands, or we talked about, this is the actual loan that we didn't close a few months ago. Because we were negotiating or discussing this with the DNR. And, and kind of come full circle on that. As you're aware, we did hire an attorney firm, actually, a person out of Madison to help negotiate for us. And the two things that occurred positive, one, they did add some more dollars to the loans, you know, in the package. You know, I think the overall amount was somewhere about, you know, maybe another $100,000, up in that range, 80 to 100,000. And then through the good effort of the, our attorney firm and our, and our local state senator and assembly person. The governor passed the budget, which gives us another $200,000, which I'm working on with the DNR to, to get, capture that money. So out of the, about $800,000 that was not in the loan, it looks like about 300,000, you know, we're getting back. That still means we're gonna have somewhere around 500,000 over in cost to the city that we'll need to take a look at this loan with the bank and then it'll be part of our budget discussions going forward here for, for next year. So what we're approving is that loan so that we can pay back our interim financing and then use that money to pay for the proceeds as part of the sewer project. So Joe, I don't know if you have any more, I mean, you've got a lot of documents from Corals or Brady for the bonding.
Yeah, but as far as these other two that you have on here in the DNR, should we do some roll call votes on these, these, these two line items on that? So that we can show in a minute that this was approved?
That makes sense.
Add them separately.
Yeah.
And we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we'd entertain a motion to approve the Clean Water Fund Loan.
So move.
Motion second to approve the DNR Clean Water Fund Loan. We have a roll call, please.
About $100,000 more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, $500,000 more than what I was expecting.
Yeah.
Expect to have Brennan times?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Third?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Okay, then entertain a motion to approve the DNR Lead Service Line Replacement Program. So move. Motion second to approve the DNR Lead Service Line Replacement Program. We have another roll call vote, please.
It should pretty much be taken care of, right, Rick?
Yep.
They're all done with the.
This should be all done with all the loans and.
No, I mean, as far as the, done with the work down there, they're pouring concrete now.
It's all about concrete work and then on Wood Avenue, it's all concrete work and asphalt.
Few spots along here.
Market, we got some manholes and catch basin work.
Okay.
Okay, for a roll call now. Coon?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is the scope of engagement letter. Paul's and Brady Legal Services. And that should be on your, on the, on the, on your iPads, if you go there, it was a letter that was drafted to me and kind of explains a rural bond council, long story short, it's basically like a, like a written agreement for multiple, so I can't see the numbers, it's like 25, 659.
659.
Right, so it's like, the, the actual legal fees, I want to say is $7,000. Just see if I can explain that here, I don't know if the, maybe somebody has to find it before I will, but.
$7,000.
Yeah, yeah, so basically, when we take action on this, this will cover the legal service, legal bill. So with some we need to do, we've got all the paperwork here, it's all prepared, Mayor and I gotta sign stuff and send it back, but it's all.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Second. Motion second to approve the scope of engagement letter with Corals and Brady Legal Services. Roll bubble, please. Come?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
The next item is the resolution to authorize the issuance of the sewer system revenue bonds. And that resolution is also, if you leave down, leave down on your, your pad there. That's the resolution prepared by Corals and Brady, their language and everything that we need for this thing here. Basically, for us to be a formality, it's part of the loan processes to adopt this resolution. So.
Move to adopt the resolution as presented.
A motion second to adopt the resolution, another roll call vote. Brian?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Moving on to city budget, 2021, 22.
Mayor Carlson, just one quick thing. If any of you get the chance, and I may go, Dan, on behalf of the mayor, write a letter to our assembly person and our state senator. So I'll, I'll work with you on that, Dan, but if any of you guys get a chance and bump into them, you know, they really worked hard on our behalf. And I think you sent me an email, Chris, we were the only one that wasn't, um, denied, denied out of all those requests. So that says something for, and not only our Republicans, but I understand the Democrats came to our aid too, that's why the governor.
So they did this to other?
Oh, they denied.
People ask this often, I guess.
Right.
That people ask.
Nakusa was the only one that got this, I don't know if you want to call it a earmark or what you want to call it.
Yep.
We were the only one to get it out of the entire state.
This, this will be something to put in your back of your hats for down the road, who's ever here, when this stuff comes around and DNR doesn't do sewer. You know?
Yeah.
Basically, the storm sewers. Yeah. Which Mike could sit there and get a point all day, but it's too late.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Sure.
I'll work you down that, Dan, we'll get something out to him.
Thank you.
So first, like light speed.
Yeah.
So. Sounds our anchor, man, so.
You need a paper copy of that right here. Otherwise, everything's in, in your binders. Anyone need to grab me one? Again, just as a reminder, the purpose, Mike, to this meeting is really the kickoff to the budget process. We're.
There you're good.
Two months earlier than we've, they've been doing this in recent history, so. And, uh, because some feedback I got on the last time around in the last two years have been a little bit rushed at the end there, so. So we're gonna kind of change, change it up a little here, we got a little bit more time. We're gonna put a little bit more time into it and assisting departments and things like that, so. Kind of covered what I propose, of course, it's your budget, so you tell me if you don't agree with that or you want me to do something different, I'd be happy to do it. So with that, I always begin the first meeting, the, the meeting number one here with just some, just some historical data, just so we can get kind of a, a place of where we are with the city and, and the graph you have in front of you on that first page is your fund balance and your levy charted out. The blue line, the blue line there, I don't know what color it is on your packet, but on the paper it turned blue, property tax levy. So you can see, and I apologize for the numbers there, they're, they're cut off, the next page kind of zooms in on the last few years, you'll see the numbers. But the property tax levy over time from 2004 to current dates, you can see it's, it's really not moved a whole lot. It's kind of inching up a little bit, but, but over the course of all those years, it hasn't moved much. Your ending fund balance is the gray line with the triangles and, and of course, you know, some of us were here when, when it kind of went down into that lower level and, and it came back up and now it's kind of heading back down a little bit, but still at a, at a good level there. The orange line is just a change, so you can see at some years where it's down and it went up, now it's coming back down. Next page, zooms in a little bit and just shows from 2011 to 20, as it's getting a little bit large to fit on a page there as, as we go. But I wanted to, to get that historical perspective in there. And again, you can see that the last, the only thing I want to point out is, is the, the text box down below with the numbers in it, the change in, in general fund, fund balance. You can see that the last two years of actual audited data, 19 and 20, has been gone down. So you're, you're down, you know, 400, almost $500,000, $500,000 in the last two years. But that's okay, because your fund balance was quite high, it was over 2 million when we started 2018, so. But keep an eye on that as we talk more about, you know, how tight it is and how you're doing, if you keep spending your fund balance, eventually you won't have fund balance, kind of like back in, when it had that low level, that wasn't a good spot back in 2011. So again, just keep that in mind, it's no different than your peers, no different than any other organization. Next chart just shows over time from 2004 to current date, just the, the rate per thousand. You know, it, it just kind of shows the history of where, where the city's levy and the rate per thousand is, of course. Levy is directly correlated with the, the rate per thousand, but a lot of other stuff goes into that. So you can have a levy that stays the same and the, the rate per thousand changes, so just keep that in mind. But that is ultimately what your, your taxpayers pay on their property tax bill, including yourself, so. So that's why I show that. This next slide is pretty important because it kind of brings all of that into perspective and it shows the gray line of fund balance percentage of expenditures. So your audit firm will come in here and they'll always talk about, you know, how, how are you, how is your end of the year audited balance? And what percentage of your fund balance is expenditures? And it turns that dollar amount into a percentage. And that's really important for municipalities, governments to do that because it really takes and, and makes all the numbers and takes the relativity out of all those numbers and eliminates that and says, okay, you can compare a percentage to the largest community in Wisconsin and the smallest community in Wisconsin. So that's one way to do that. It also checks on the health of the fund balance. So if you go up for bonding and things like that, they'll take a look at that and say, do you have enough reserve, enough fund balance for the size of your entity? Which is directly resulted in how much you spend. Obviously, you're spending down your fund balance, so that's, that's one way we look at it. So the gray line there is a percentage of expenditures, fund balances of expenditures. You can see back in 2004, it was 10%, which is, is a very high number. And that went pretty much consistently down for, for quite a few years there until it hit the bottom of, of 29%. Now, keep in mind, this is total fund balance, so just keep that thought. And then it popped back up and you're at 51% right now, so, so you have half of your expenditures in your total fund balance. So that's another way to think of it. So the, all the money you spend in a year, you could fund half of it without a single dollar coming in. Another way to look at it, but that's not realistic. The orange line or whatever color that is, is the, the more realistic number because the difference between the two is your reserves, your non-lapsing funds. So you earmarked some of that money for certain projects. You intend eventually to spend that money, that's why you're levying money into that category each year. So the better way to do that or the more conservative way to do that is to say, well, let's assume all that is gone and spent. Because someday you're gonna spend it all on something. So of course, is lower, always is, when you have a reserve or when you have a, a, a non-lapsing type situation. So that number at its, at its peak way back in his history was 76%, it went down all the way to 7%. So the recommended minimum is that, that whatever color that is there, right on, right between 50 and 20%. Now, I would argue that 20% is really the minimum you want to have, so 20 to 25%. Again, that's enough reserve to handle any unforeseen things. So you can see, we brought it back up, you brought it back up to, back up to over 25%, over 23% in 2013. And then it went up to 40 and it's been hovering 40, now it's coming back down, you're back down to 29%. So you're still, you know, nine percentage points ahead of what's considered the minimum, but you gotta keep an eye on that. Because as it gets tougher and tougher to budget, it's gonna, and, and you have been eating away at it. You don't want to keep going like this line back from 2006 to 2010. You don't want to relive that, because that wasn't a good spot to be in when you're down at 7%. You're having trouble at times of the year paying bills and things like that, so we don't want to repeat that, so. Get some historical perspective. The next thing I want to focus on is really the net new construction. And the net new construction is an absolute critical number in the budget process. That's really what drives how much the city can budget each year. That is directly on the levy limit in the state of Wisconsin, so all municipalities have to follow this. And what the net new construction number is, is, is released by the Department of Revenue and it just shows exactly that, your net new construction. So that number has been pretty low for the city, so that chart kind of seems like it's doing a roller coaster. But you got to understand that the bottom number zero, the top number is 1%. So it's pretty much nonexistent right now for the, for, since 2015. Some of your, your peers in, in Wood County are up in the 6, 7, 8% range. And I'll, I'll kind of talk about what that means and, and, and what that means to your levy, so, so I'll do that next. But if you turn the page, I just kind of zoomed out a little bit on that. And that's, it shows from 0 to 5% on just how low that net new construction is. And you can't do anything about that, it, it is, I shouldn't say you can't do anything about that, but you, you, that number is nothing you can control. That's how many houses are built, how many businesses are built, your net new construction. So again, you're not alone in the challenge, a lot of municipalities are in that position. So if we, just as a preliminary kind of first look at this, we're, we're early, we're, we're in August yet, so, so it's early. But I wanted to just present what the answer to your budget is already, because we already know where you're gonna be. So your net new construction was a point four zero percent, so less than a half percent. So what that means for 2022 budget is you can raise your levy $4,600, that's it. Again, that's not gonna cover anything, that's not gonna cover cost of living, that's not gonna cover a thing, so what do we do now? Well, let's talk about it. I mean, you can see the prior year left column, there's your 21 budget that we're in right now. So you levied 1,464,831. That's split between, I'm sorry, 1,474,885 was your expenditures. The difference between those two numbers is your applied fund balance that you applied in the 21 budget a year ago. So that's split between general fund levy, 918,000, library, 133,809. Fire department, 87220, and debt service levy, 335,000. Of course, in the general fund is a, a number of departments that fall into that. So option number one, this assumes, which is totally not realistic, but I wanted to present it this way at first. This assumes a zero increase departmental budget, so that means exactly what was budgeted in those four categories that I gave you is exactly what, what's on the sheet, so you can see those columns just carry forward. I just wanted to present right off the bat where we're at. So with a point four net new construction, you have option one, which would be the, to keep the levy exactly the same. And option two would be to max out the budget for what you have as of today in debt service for 2022. Of course, that may change, we're only in August, you may borrow some at the end of 21 here in the budget process. And if you plan on doing that, we have to work, or even plan on doing that even for the end of the year, we have to work that principal interest in, which could raise that number and then raise your levy. But that remains, we've seen that will be vetted out in the next month and a half to two months. So option one, if you kept the levy, you said, you know what, we're not gonna change the levy, we're gonna have a zero increase, which you have done in, in the past, in the past five years, you'd have to cut $60,000 from last year's budget. And now the reason why that happens and happened is, and remember a year ago, we talked about it, your debt service had about a $45,000 kind of a, a, an automatic reduction in it every year over the last 10 years. Why? Because roughly, if it was eight years ago, something like that. If it was eight years ago, something like that, you levied for three hundred thousand dollars of debt service. And you refinanced and you didn't have principal and interest that year, so you didn't have those expenditures. So what we did is we just divided that entire amount out by the life of the loan, and now we're to the end of the loan, so the two thousand twenty two budget. Does not reflect that, but and from this point on, it won't reflect that, so. Um so that's why it's sixty thousand, the other one is the the ten, the other rest of it is a ten thousand dollar applied, anytime you apply funds, you have to. Deal with that the next year, because again, uh on apples to apples budget, twenty one to twenty two. It's going to assume you're going to apply another ten thousand dollars, so that's how that works. If you take option two, which is a maxed out as of right now for the debt service. Uh you you'd increase your levy one point one zero percent. Now, that's pretty bad, because you don't have any options, a few years ago, we had quite a few more options, the good news of that, though, is. You'll qualify under expenditure restraint program again, because you have to, I mean, you have to live within a two percent. Now, we don't have the exact percentage unless you got it recently. Um last year was two percent, I assume it's going to be right around that percentage, when that gets released, we'll make sure during this process that we. You know, if it's for some reason lower, we'll make sure you know about that, so you can make decisions to get that, but last year was two, the year before it was two. I think the year before that was three, so if you're at one point one maximum, I think you're going to get it, so that's good, that that's about seventy thousand dollars more revenue you get. So that's a big, that's a big deal when we're talking about these numbers. So then it would come down to forty four thousand, that is not a realistic approach, because you can't automatically keep everything exactly the same. Fuel goes up, salaries go up, health insurance goes up. So the next page is really that same data with just a wild stab at this point of, okay, what could possibly be. You know, two percent increase in salaries and a six percent increase of health insurance, I'll be honest with you, health insurance could be more than that, could be less than that, we don't know at this point. And when you get that indication, you'll be letting me know that stuff, and that'll be all part of the process of an explain. But if we do that, those numbers all of a sudden get a whole lot more difficult and a lot more challenging. So option one, keeping the levy the same, you'd have to cut a hundred and seventeen thousand to get within the levy limits. And option two would be a hundred thousand, so we're looking at some pretty challenging budgets here, which is not a surprise, we knew that. Um we're just in that environment, we're going to be in that environment at least for two more years, and I'll explain why only two to three more years, so. Just to give you a little bit more background on that, your levy, your total levy now increased. From two thousand seventeen to twenty one, only two point nine percent, that's all you've went to the levy for. Your expenditures increased twelve point four percent, so that's why we're seeing a drop in your in your fund balance, so. That has to be reversed, um or you'll keep using your fund balance, so. Again, these are very preliminary, two percent, six percent are are not tied anything, so. Now, the next page is important, because as we sit here and talk about twenty two and start diving into twenty two. And start crunching the numbers over the next two months, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking ahead, and and normally we do that. But it's very important to do that this year, because your debt service is coming due. So that's a very critical moment in time. So you can see, this is really what the the debt service exemption, the the allowance under the levy limit that allows you to increase your levy above. The four thousand dollars that you can you can levy. Um by taking what you pay in debt service each each budget year, you can put on the tax levy, assuming. It meets the qualifications, which is after two thousand five and general obligation, so any debt you take out, that's revenue bonds and a water and sewer does not apply to this. I mean, that's paid for by your your water and sewer users, so if you take a look at this, you have three loans that go into this. Four loans that go into this calculation every year. You have the uh the two thousand thirteen loan, which has a total principal and interest in two thousand twenty two of two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. That loan will be paid off in two thousand twenty three. So we're doing the twenty two budget next year, fast forward a year from now, that'll be the last, you will see that on here. Why is that important? Because then in two thousand twenty four, that drops off. Which means, that doesn't mean you can use that somewhere else, that means your levy will come down three hundred thousand dollars. Because you don't have to pay it anymore, so apples to apples, it won't hurt you any, it'll be in the same boat you're in. It'll help you, because your taxes will come down, the problem is, once they come down. They're they're there, right? So what you want to do as a strategy, and we can talk a lot more about this in the next few years, because the other two lines you can see. Are both done in twenty four, so you can see, within two years, you're going to go from having an exemption of three hundred and forty nine, forty nine thousand to zero. Which brings you to a strategy, because what you don't want to happen is a a three hundred thousand dollar drop to your levy is significant. And there may be a drop, don't get me wrong, that may be part of the, part of the goal here is to drop your levy. But you don't, what you want to do is you want to then say, okay, is there anything in in capital outlet that we want to do, that we haven't been doing? Or that we need to do in two thousand twenty four, twenty five, and you want to borrow for it. You want to borrow for it to replace that principal interest and then keep everything going, that's how the levy limits are supposed to work. You don't want it to do this, we've seen it before in other other municipalities where they just weren't on the ball, they didn't do anything, debt service ran out. Levy dropped two hundred thousand dollars, yay, everybody's celebrating, and then the next year they borrow and it goes back up again, you don't want to do that. It's just, it's not the way that that the levy limits were designed to do that, so we'll help you through that. Uh it'll make more sense when we get that far, but we got to start thinking a year from now of what you're going to borrow in two thousand twenty three. But more importantly, two thousand twenty four, so you got to start looking at that, again, you have to borrow it in order to pay it the following year. Because anytime you borrow money, you don't usually have to pay it till the following year, so you'll have to borrow money in twenty three to pay it twenty four, and then in twenty five, you'll have to borrow the rest. Now.
Borrow for equipment, you mean, and stuff like that?
Yep, road work, equipment, could be anything. Yeah, you got a new car. Not that. So.
Well, oh, so there are a couple of things, like a road project, potentially, roof, parking lot over here.
All that stuff is good stuff.
Some weathered streets that are.
Yeah.
That are on my on my mind down the road, you know, that type of thing, but.
Now, that's a lot of debt service, that that was loans that were a long time ago, borrowing rates much cheaper right now. I would not expect you to have the entire amount in debt service, unless, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money borrowed in those three lines. Now, you still have the the um C D A uh loan, the revenue bond there, that's that's going to continue, so. Um so you'll have some, but so your levy could be coming down a little bit, which is okay, which is okay, because your your tax rate per thousand is is quite high. So with that, let's talk about kind of what what we're at here, and 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 again, I'm putting this down not because this is. These are the assumptions that we're at today, I want you to understand that anything that's. That's not on this list or that's different from this list will change the numbers, so that's kind of the way why I want to approach this. So levy increase is defined as net levy, so that doesn't mean the total levy, the one million, you know, um. Four hundred and sixty four thousand that you levied, that means if a department's net levy. Is how much the levy comes to that fund, so that's the net levy, so that's revenues minus expenses, here's how much we need for a levy. So just making sure that that's defined, levy limit for two thousand twenty two is point four zero, four thousand six hundred eighty three. Again, un- until there's substantial growth in any one year, that will stay pretty much the same. I mean, that is actually down a little bit from a year ago, it was point five four, so just over a half percent, the year before that was point two three. So you've been living with the small percentages for for quite some time, as as most of you know. Um zero levy increase to any department budget from two thousand twenty one, you had, we have to be going into this process with that in mind. There will be exceptions to that, obviously, because you can't control some of the costs, but what. We have to go in, we already talked about it, we got to, you got to cut sixty thousand dollars if you had the same exact dollar amount. So there has to be something that that is done, so to start with a zero based increase is a good place to start. And then we go more detailed onto that and and take case by case. It assumes zero increase to wages, that doesn't mean that's going to happen, that just means, what I have it on the slide is, if you say a two percent. That means it's going to affect the bottom line, kind of like my first and second graphs as far as the options, that's all the the point of this is. Zero increase to health insurance uh from two thousand twenty one, does not include any new debt that you would issue uh in twenty one for payment in twenty two. Uh does not include any garbage truck decisions, um again, keep in mind. That there's a uniqueness to the garbage situation where you special charge that. So if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars currently of special charges and costs of the garbage. And you reduce those to a hundred thousand dollars, that will reduce your special charge, it will not affect the general fund budget. Because that is a special charge outside, it will reduce your tax bills, so just so you understand that. Um the the directly, indirectly, of course, whatever decision you guys, did you make a decision? So you made a decision, if that leads to selling trucks and things like that, of course, that will come in. And be a revenue, which will help capital accounts, help things like that, so there will be an indirect. Uh and very positive impact, but it will not be a dollar for dollar, okay, we saved fifty thousand, we can now spend fifty thousand on health insurance, doesn't work that way. Because you special charge that, if that was on the levy, it would work that way. You made the decision years ago not to do that, which ultimately saved you for, from where we're at right now, it would have been ten years ago, so. That's just time, which is, which is okay.
There will be one, one that should affect a lot of people, because we will not be replacing one of our guys on the city crew.
We have a retirement.
Yeah, correct, so that will help.
Yeah.
Public works, there'll be less.
So that's that's huge, I mean, that that's.
Could be the sixty.
That's kind of stuff we need to, we need, you need to do, and and that's good.
Just just kind of a heads up, the county went through their preliminary budgets this year, we're doing some, I think, one point four million in cuts, which is uh. Significant, yet it's manageable, where we already found four hundred thousand, but one of the things we came up with was that our healthcare is going up one percent.
No way.
That's an official number, um and we're absorbing it, we're not passing any of it on, just just so you know. Uh that's what it's looking like, it's looking like low numbers again this year. That's uh I'm I'm amazed with with everything that's going on, but it's it's looking like low numbers.
Hopefully you see the same results, that'd be nice. Uh the key issue here, um again, assumes the same level of new. Uh new budget money being added to the capital outlet or non-lapsing costs, that's huge, because. You, in two thousand twenty one budget, you still put in a hundred and twenty thousand of your levy. And if you do the math, that's a pretty good percentage of your levies, you're still able to put that into your your non-lapsing accounts. The uh the the way you got to strategize this, and and we're certainly not going to solve all the problems tonight, but I want to make sure you start understanding and looking at this. That debt schedule that I brought up there, and that's on that page, that is directly tied to this to this non-lapsing concept. Because we may very well, you may very well decide to switch at that point, because you have the borrowing capacity now to kind of fill that. To do away with the capital outlet. And and just simply basically take some of that, especially the operational side of the capital. There's there's stuff in your capital right now that's operations, boat landing, things like that, that should really be put into either its own fund. Or what you do is you say, here's the eight different things we want to have capital outlay non-lapsing for. And you transfer that money outside the general fund altogether, and you get it into a capital project fund, and that's how you budget. Into the capital project fund, same difference, but now directly tied to capital projects in a capital projects fund. Because what you got it, going to have to eventually get away from is just keep pumping money in there, keeping that balance real high. And then and then having that be available, obviously, if you could get away with that forever, it'd be great. We're gonna, we're gonna run out of time, we're gonna run out of out of space, and and big decisions like roofs and things like that are going to be like, we don't know how to pay for it. We have no ability to pay for it, and and then you you got the county making cuts like that, obviously, their budget's a lot bigger than yours. But, you know, we haven't really cut your budget ever, it's always been either the same or a little bit high, higher, so keep that in mind. We may be faced with that eventually, so that's a key issue and a and a key opportunity. To change it around and actually do do it a little bit differently in in four years, three years. Um if we need to, obviously, I have no idea what's going to happen with the levy limit statute, they could change things, they could loosen it up, they could tighten it up even further. I have no idea, but but we'll react whatever we're faced with. Uh if anything on this list requires an increase, which is almost certain. Uh we'll have to reduce departmental budgets within the department to try to get it down to that zero levy hit. And that's, of course, a governance decision, so you can make exceptions, you can do things you want to do, that's all going to be part of this process over the next two months.
So all all it is, is just a change in in wording, basically, because if you take away money from a capital outlet. You you just use them and you put it into a. One, one big account, you've got to pay like new new squad car, new new dump truck.
Yep, still comes out of there.
So you're still paying out of that.
Yep, the only difference.
I guess I don't see what the advantage to it is, and it's.
Yeah, I mean, that's totally up to you, the advantage is, it's it's out of the general fund and it doesn't become part of the budget process anymore. It becomes, okay, how much money, I mean, it's similar, right, you're doing the same thing, the problem is, within all those outlet accounts. There is non-capital items, that's the big difference. So those really should be in the general fund budget and your departmental budget, it's not down in the the five, five, seven accounts. Um now, we can clean those up and keep them in five, seven, that's fine, same difference, it's just.
I'm just trying to to.
Yeah.
Understand to differentiate between.
Differentiate is, if you start.
Got to pay the bill, it's just.
Yeah, the bill.
You know.
The difference is, that would lead to probably a huge reduction in the capital project non-lapsing, and you would borrow more. Instead of levying for it, you would use that capacity towards your departments. So if you don't put a hundred and twenty thousand into that. You would use it for your departments, so if you need a hundred, if you need sixty grand this year. To essentially break even on the same budget, you'd be able to use half of that for for doing that without making cuts. That's what the key is, now, of course, you'd only have sixty thousand then going into that capital outlet or the whatever you want to do, you want to keep it where it is or put it in its own fund. But what would you do in return is you'd borrow, you'd borrow for some of those things instead of saving ahead. That is saving ahead of time, it's just a shift, and maybe we'll never need to do it, but.
It's like you said, though, with you, you know, the things I've been running through with my head, because interest rates being as low as they are right now.
Yep.
You know, and I, you don't know banker or anything, but I don't see that going up any in the near future. Not the way things are going right now.
The rates are going to go up, no doubt, it's just a matter of how long and.
How much?
I don't see that happening in a year, five years now, couldn't tell you. But I I don't know if they'll be back up to the three, four, five percent.
Um it might be good, this might be a lot, but that. That'll figure.
It's it, it's going to be in.
Just going to be.
Going to be in there, and it's going to be used for one-time stuff, so it can't be used for operations, um have you used any of it yet?
We put it in a sewer water account, you know, because it's obviously, that's one of the things they earmark for, is you know sewer water type stuff.
Yep.
Which we need to figure out how we're going to use that.
Then you got roads to recovery, correct? Did you get any roads to recovery in twenty one, we got, oh yeah, like a hundred and.
It's half of it was a hundred and twenty five.
I saw that on there, so.
Know what you're talking about, Eric?
No, he's talking about the art of money, but.
Art of money.
I but the roads to recovery is is going to be, it's going to be basically used as a revenue. So so we're going to put that in the budget, but we don't want to use that for operations, we don't want to say, oh, you know, we're good. Because it has to be done for projects, so I'm thinking you should put that in its own fund, and then it doesn't lapse in its general fund. Other fund, but.
Well, we can, well, we'll, we can talk about that, but.
We can transfer, then do you think we should?
Or put it up a day or something like that.
Well, it was, we put it in an outlet, but it.
Yeah, the art of funds we put in a, uh I think a water outlet account, the art of funds.
Yeah, 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 so anyway, that that's good news, that's not bad news. That's gonna, gonna help you big time, just like all the other communities, you of course got to use it for what what you can use it for. But obviously, any help in the sewer and any help with infrastructure you have, that's that's money coming in.
So that boat landing, that's where we're taking it, we're taking in some money for that every year, sportsmen are. So that might be something we want to do, starting like uh in this budget process, is you set that up in a separate.
Yep, separate fund or, you know, or the general fund, it's not a huge dollar amount, so. You can, you can keep track of it separately in the general fund, you don't need to, it's not going to roll and lose it, it's just.
I mean, it's in a capital outlet, obviously, but you you're saying that we need to move some of that stuff out of there, though.
Really not capital outlet, and 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 it gets the intent of it, it it depends what the intent is, if it's to maintain. The boat landing, then it shouldn't be in capital outlet, then it probably should be in its own fund.
Yeah, that's that's, okay, well, it it was set up with the ideas that the sportsman would be. You know, these boat landing uh boat fees and stuff, is is exactly what it's.
Is, is exactly what it's there for. If the high water wrecks the. Um, boat docks like it did when you're wrapping around the axles, you got the money to fix it. Exactly. And stuff, so.
Nothing wrong with it, nothing wrong.
Airing the parking area. You know, Larry's brought up about maybe adding a fishing pier as an opportunity at the boat landing, things like that.
Exactly. That'd be capital. So that'd be a capital item, you know, repaving it, painting lines and stuff like that. That's not capital.
Be looking at new lumber for the docks this year too, yeah. Get some pricing, cause it's getting pretty bad. Original stuff and there's holes in it.
So you think we should put it as a separate fund though, right? We can work on that. That doesn't really tie to this stuff. I mean, we can, that's kind of nuts and bolts. So what we can do, it's up to you guys what you wanna do. We can. Keep it where it is. We can move it. We can move it in with its own fund. It, it depends what. You know, how much money you anticipate that growing to. If it's gonna be a sizable amount, it should probably be in its own fund. If it's not ever gonna mount anything, if you're just gonna.
It's close to a hundred grand.
Yeah, but it probably should be a special revenue. And then, then everybody sees it. It's, it's transparent, things like that, so.
Yeah, they see it, they wanna spend it.
Grouped with a bunch of other things, then it's going to a bunch of other things too.
Yep. So, so. How do, how do we, where do we go from here? So, so the approach, obviously we're doing this two months early. Um, so the approach is a little bit different and, and this is what I'm proposing. Timing much earlier start, longer interactive process. So in the past, what we've done is for quite a few years. Is we have this meeting, we talk about kind of the same stuff. Um, we talk about what you have to live to, to the, to the levy limits. And then we threw it out and said, okay, departments get us the. Request, ask for whatever you want. Well, we're not doing that this year, cause it's a waste of time. You can't, you're not gonna be able to ask for fifty thousand dollar increase in your levy. It's not gonna work. So what we're doing is we're gonna say, hey. Assume a zero budget increase levy. That doesn't mean every expenditure has to be exactly the same. That just means bottom line. That's what the assumption has to be. Then turn it into me. And then I'm thinking, and I, and I have a calendar at the end, but I'm thinking middle of September. Could be earlier. That's three weeks from now. You wanna make it two weeks. Labor days in there. I don't care. Whatever you tell me later, that's fine too. We're way ahead of the game, so that's okay. Um, get it to me. And then what usually took place is I would crunch the numbers, run the numbers, look for any oddities, look for anything that doesn't make sense. Ask about it. Usually there wasn't a whole lot. And then I, we'd come and have a meeting and that's sort of number, meeting number two. We're gonna do a little bit differently. This is what I'm proposing. With guidance from council. And that is. Have that happen, get it, get us all the budgets. And then I wanna set a week, hopefully it doesn't take a week, but a couple of days, I would think. And sit down with every department head, just me, I, I, my team. And before it gets to council and just go over what's in there. Okay, what do you have for salary? What I wanna do is I wanna start drilling down into. Okay, how much time was put into this budget? Is it just last year's salary, you know, times a percentage, or do you actually go through and actually figure out what the salaries are? We gotta start having that be done. And obviously the biggest department is, is yours, Rick. So that's a big job. So. I'm figuring maybe a half a day to a day, sit down with you and actually going through the numbers. At the end of that, we'll have a pretty reasonable either to do list for you and then, and then finish it. And then we'll do that on all the departments, every single one of them. Library, fire department, ambulance, public works, not forgetting anybody. Sorry, you.
Your departments too, even.
Your departments.
Our department's already set up with.
Even though the way they're set up, because. As I always say, it's fair the way it's being done. And I'm not saying you should do it differently, but it's still just a department. And you still have a decision, a governance decision of how much levy goes there, just like the library, just like the police department, just like ambulance and just like. Public works. There's no difference from a budget standpoint. The money going in is the money going in. Obviously, there's different governance. There's a library board. There's, there's different things, but the levy amount going there is your decision. So with that in mind. I wanna meet with everybody. Now, that meeting could be, you know, a co- an hour just to go through because again. The levy doesn't increase much, but it does increase. So that's an increase, has to be cut somewhere else.
So then you come back to us with recommendations.
Then compile all that.
Similar to what this is.
And then do meeting number two and say, here's what we got. Here's what it looks like. Almost like an update, uh, uh, an information on me. I don't even know if I'd have to come. I could probably do that over Zoom and just say, here's where we're at. Here's what, what do we do now? And, and look for guidance and I'll give you suggestions at that point to say. Okay, your levy went here, went there. Here's what you wanna do. Here's what we can do. Um, we do have the capital outlay number of a hundred and twenty thousand every year that we can fall back on. That's a huge. Opportunity to, to, to use. Once it's gone, it's gone. If we, if you say, hey, we're a hundred and twenty off, we're gonna just zero that out. You'd be done. You'd have a bare bones budget. Uh, not a decreased budget, a, 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 a budget that's the same or a one percent higher if you opt for option two. And we're done. At that point, then we would go through the, the formality of, of publishing and things like that. But.
Everything.
There's also a decision that you could say, well, no, we gotta increase this budget here. So we gotta really decrease these other ones. You might say, you know, we need this, we need that during that process over the next month or two. So. And that could take as long as it takes. I mean, as long as you drive that show. So if you're not comfortable with it, we keep going and we keep working. And, you know, again, working with the departments to not take your time to do that here, I think is, is valid. And that's the way it normally works. Kind of take care of all the details, then present it. And if you wanna make change at that point, that's fine. But at least then all the noise is out of it and it's not in a public meeting like we've been doing in the past, so.
John, if we went ahead and, and zeroed out the outlays, you know, which helps the situation. What you're, what we're moving towards then is then.
Borrowing.
Borrowing for projects and equipment purchases from that point on.
Yeah, once it's gone, I mean. It wouldn't be immediate because you have eight hundred thousand dollars in there.
We have some there now, right?
You could, you could use that, but you know, as well as I know, once you use it, it's gonna be gone in, you know, two, three years. So. Or four years unless there's a huge project coming out of it. So, so again, all, all these things are simply designed to. Work with the levy limit. What's here today? We do not know. We could plan this great plan for two thousand thirty. Uh, twenty three, twenty four, and they could change the limit to make it zero. I, I have no idea what they're gonna do. They could make a five. I have no idea. Then we wouldn't have to worry about it. I mean, just, and, and then net new construction also ties into this. So if you have a huge growth in the city of Nacusa. I, I did some numbers and your numbers, if you had a five percent. Now, that's a big jump from where you're at, but if you had a five percent net new construction. You're, you could raise your levy from last year to this year, seventy three thousand dollars. That's a big difference.
You seen new constructions? What do you mean?
New houses, businesses.
What's that percentage? I mean, like square footage or?
New, net new construction to your value of the city. So if apartment goes in, if a. Goes in, it ties into that. And it's based on value. So if I build one house in here. Overall city's not gonna make much difference. If I build a, uh, an Amazon plant out of town, it's gonna make that a huge difference. Cause that value is, is huge. So that all, that all ties. That all ties into that. So again, I know you're looking at some different things with, with some growth. Um, that will tie directly in your ability to levy. We grow, that comes with a cost as well.
Spending money.
Never, never free.
So spend it to make it.
And, and then also, once you have more people, you need more services, you need more police, you need more, more fire. So, so that also. Has to be thought of. And, and that doesn't mean you shouldn't do it because obviously you, you wanna grow in the model we're in right now, so. A seven, an increase. Seven point five percent, which is probably a little bit wild as far as a, a, an example, but let's just take it. Be a hundred and nine thousand dollar increase to the levy. So you're talking about some real numbers now. Now, of course, if it goes back down to point four. Then it would level back up and it wouldn't increase an extra. So it's just a one year thing, but that's huge. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars added to your levy, to your budget and you'd be. You'd probably go with option one, not even raise your levy because you'd have that ability to, to do it. And, and then if you don't use it. So let's say you got a huge bump and you said, yeah, we don't need to use it all. You don't have to use it all. It carries over. Well, if you could raise a levy by fifty thousand dollars, you only need to raise it by twenty. You get the rest of it the following year to tap into. That's really cool. And the only thing in the levy limit that works that way, so. So again, that's, uh, that's kind of the process that we're, we're, we're talking. So each department create a budget similar to prior years. The process will be similar. You'll assume a zero base levy, uh, increase from two thousand twenty one. Uh, and then any exceptions to that, we would just present. Uh, take, uh, so then the next step of this is, is to kinda, since we have the time. Is to, the ask to the departments is a little bit different and it's the same process. But after they get it done, I won't, what, what a lot of communities do. When you start getting into, hey, we might have to cut at some point in time. You wanna break your expenditures into three categories, non discretionary, discretionary and capital outlay. Non discretionary costs are required to provide the service level at the current level. That could be payroll, that could be fixed costs, heat, things like that, fuel. Those are what you need to do in order to operate whatever department we're talking about. Discretionary are more like wants. Like, okay, I need this. I want that. This is equipment, things like that, capital outlay. It could be even overtime, like, well, we anticipate overtime, but it's something maybe we can do without and if we wanted to. Things like that would fall into a discretionary mode. Why, why would we do that? Because when it comes time to that second meeting. The view that were here in the past, you know how it is. We all kind of look at each other, oh, which line you wanna cut. Well, this gives much more. Emphasis on what departments have discretionary and what are we talking about? That way you can make a much better and informed decision. And it also is better for the departments because now they know, hey, well, if I'm gonna cut ten grand. It's not coming out of my salaries line, it's gonna come out of this, this equipment line that we can wait another year to do. So that's, that's why we, that's why most municipalities do it that way. And then I, I did throw in a third one, which is. Capital outlay because some capital outlay may be discretionary, some may be non discretionary, depending on what the needs of that department are. But it's also capital items. So that gives us further guidance or further opportunities to say, well, could these then be taken out of the budget? And put into a borrowing situation in the future. So kind of getting it, you're set to. Uh, to, to go on. Now, that could be as easy as doing the budget like last year and putting an N, a D and a C next to it. That's fine with me. Doesn't have to be fancy, doesn't have to be anything but what you think is required costs and what you think. Those are kind of optional costs, another way to look at it. Uh, again, that'll make it easier to look at what areas to cut or, um, just trying to stay inside the levy limits as it gets tougher and tougher to do that. Capital and non lapsing approach that we talked about that as far as a continued discussion on, on what we wanna do there. So the agenda and the, the budget process as we were here a little bit earlier, uh, gives us a little bit of flexibility. And any of these can be changed completely. So I just threw this together as a guide and a discussion item. Budget, department budgets due to us by September fifteenth with that criteria. And again, what, what I'm gonna do when I meet with departments is I wanna make sure there's. Some kind of robust calculating in some of the budget numbers. So payroll should really be a list of, of here's how many people we have. Here's their salary, their actual salary. Here's what we intend. Any hourly type situations, here's what we estimate is, is. The, the hours based on historical data or if there's something that's happening that you think's gonna happen, um, that in there. That leaves the previous and, and. And then that's okay way to do it too, but it leaves a previous method, which is just kind of taking last year's and, and sliding it over percentage wise. Um, you really gotta come in. The complication part of that is, is mainly in Rick's department. And that is some of his payroll costs that are currently in the general fund, go to water and sewer. We absolutely need to fix that. So when they code their time and workforce, it goes directly to water and sewer. And the payroll. We have to get to that model because what happens now is you have to wait till now. And then we end up doing it like three times. It's very inefficient and it, it ends up costing money on our time.
John, is that something that works? Yeah, we do it right on workforce.
Right on workforce. And there has to be time sheets capped or time logs kept. So that particular two week period or whatever you have. They can say, okay, here's general, here's water, here's sewer, here's all the departmental accounts that it goes into. So that, we'll just have to work towards that. And whatever day we start doing that, if that's in twenty two, that's fine. But when we sit here, if that's done, when we sit here, your numbers on this sheet here would be accurate right now at any point in the year. And that's the model we wanna get to. We wanna be able to get to very little journal entries at the end of the year and just. Every month you look at that, it's, it's accurate. Um, so that'll be part of this process, just to kind of go through that. Um, we'll have to do it the old fashioned way this year, just to, to calculate that out. Which we're gonna do in between now and then, or, or now at the end of September. Then at some point in September, I threw out a week, but it can't, anytime. I will meet with department heads. That can be by Zoom, so, so you don't have to pay me to come here. That can be by whatever. Telephone might be easier, especially Rick with you. Just come here. I could sit here for a day and talk to everybody. We could just make appointments and talk to everybody. Two days, whatever it takes. Um, but that, that's gonna be the, a huge change and it's gonna be very, very important to do that. Um, and I think the results will be, I think you'll like them because we'll be much more prepared for that second meeting. Then I will, we'll set a, a second meeting to talk about where we're at. What we're looking like, the requests, you know, you'll get a, a, the requested budgets ahead of time. So. As council, you can question individual line items. You can get into the details if you want to or, or not. But we can talk about the bottom line. Okay, here's where we're at. Here's how far we're off of the level of limit. Uh, structure. And then I threw in a third meeting and, and, so we're probably looking in October now. So by the time we started last year, we'll already be to the point where we'll be almost done. So that'll be excellent because then, now we can't be completely done. We can't rush it. Because actual data is coming in for twenty one and the longer we wait, the better it is. And we don't get some of the numbers from the state until that point. So we're, we're guessing, a lot of the numbers don't change that much. So we'll be okay until we get to that point. But until we, to, to finalize everything, we're gonna need to be in that October, end of October timeframe. Um, but we'll have a much better handle on where we're at. And, and health insurance. When will you know health insurance?
Well, um, I'm gonna be making a call probably with, uh, within a day or so. I've been in contact with, uh, we've got one employee that retired. But, uh, he's probably gonna cobra for two months. And so I'm doing some paperwork related to that and I'm in contact. It is exactly.
We still need to know the rates.
Yeah, there was. Yeah, there, it's, uh.
Even if you can get a preliminary, I know we got a preliminary last year and it turned out to be pretty much spot on. So that's good. Yeah, even, even if it's.
It's not gonna be zero percent up here.
I, I guarantee it won't be, right? We're seeing.
Five percent or something. Yeah, it, it's been, it's been great, uh. Only had one year and it gets, it's been great. I mean, it's, I'm not aware of any real large claim or anything, uh. But I'm aware of, so hopefully, uh, we can get some good rates.
We have been seeing some increases. I'll be honest with you. So. Some of the plans are staggered where we know already at some clients, just because it's not calendar year. Um, so they, they renew in October, November, just so they know exactly what they're gonna be faced with. Um, but the problem is there's so many variables you cannot guess. So when you had the last two years are really good. I had others that had twelve percent increase. Guess as good as mine, obviously without, uh, you know, a lot of activity, perhaps it stays somewhat the same. So hopefully. Um, that'll be a huge impact on the budget, obviously. Those are giant numbers. So. So that, that really drives where we might be in a, if that number's really high, we're gonna be. During those individual meetings, we're gonna be saying, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to cut. And, and not have a zero base, but a negative based.
Yeah, a couple of questions. How, how can I ask them so that you understand what I'm asking?
I understand.
Cause I'm kind of new to this. What was the term you used? The, the funds that are needed, absolutely have to have to operate. So that's discretionary.
Yeah, that's just a.
Okay, that's all. Say, for example, and I'll just pick on Rick. Let's say Rick has five shovels. And he only needs four, but because he had five last year, the five's still gonna be there? Or, you know, and that's, that's really kind of a rinky dinky example, but you take that to a bigger extent. So will the items that come in on all of the budgets be? Pretty specific.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna be to that level, but when.
And I said, that's kind of a petty example, but. But, but take for example.
A good example.
Take a bigger example. Throughout the city, all the vehicles we have. You know, police, fire, ambulance, public works. Um, they, they have this pot of vehicles right now. And going forward, they say they still need that. Is that still sitting there zero? Is that still sitting there, zero base there or? You know, and I don't know how we'd ever change that, but.
Yeah, the only way to change it is to really get minute in the details, so what the challenge and what really the direction from you. As council has to be is. Look to what's absolutely necessary, so in your shovel example, which is a great example. If you need four shovels and you're budgeting five, the goal is not to get five in your budget. The goal is to get four on that line or identified. And the one is, is basically discretionary, non discretionary before, I need four shovels or I cannot do my job. The fifth one is extra, we can do without, now that's an honor system. Because of, uh, as a department head, you could say, no, I need ten shovels, when you only need five, I can't do anything about that. You can't do anything about that, but we're gonna see that on the numbers. So if the zero base budget comes in at fifty thousand more, it's already. Now we're gonna start digging in, during that individual meeting, we're gonna start digging in and say, mm-mm, it's not gonna work, it can't work. Can't work.
I think Mike, one of the things that has helped keep that in check is. That we've refined and refined and refined really for the past ten years, you know, even really since two thousand ten. When the general fund was. And then act ten came and then that. Pretty much mandated us to do it, but it has, we've refined it even since then. And really it comes down to priorities and one of the things that really keeps it in check are, are. Uh, employee wages and raises, so.
Yeah, that's the biggest. Get on any budget anyway.
So going forward next year. I've got a balance between. How bad do I need?
Three bullets or four?
Yes, or, or given my guys. Raises, so really it's. It's a, it's a balancing act to try to determine. How bad you need stuff or how bad you want to.
Selling your needs in the past, whether you need it or not, that's where it's gonna help you now, if you have to cut. And that's kind of, that's kind of a silly analogy, but it's reality.
And that's exactly correct, the, the, the mitigating control of trying to get stuff in the budget is. You will have no room as a department head to do anything, so it's advantageous for you to say. I'm gonna identify everything in this budget that's discretionary to get it on that category, so maybe I can do without. And then I can get raises, I can get a piece of equipment that I desperately need, maybe I don't need it, but I really could use it as far as. It would provide service. All of that is done for one simple reason, so we can come together and you can make policy decisions, that's it. Because it's not gonna work as flawlessly as it sounds, because there's gonna be a need that's gonna increase something.
Need is different to your mind than somebody else's mind.
And, and if fuel goes up twenty percent, you need to put fuel in the trucks, we can't say, nah, we're gonna do without the fuel. You're gonna have to cut twenty percent somewhere else, and that is the, the reality that we're in, and that's the challenge. And that's why br- breaking it into categories is gonna make that job easier, hopefully.
No, Mike, what I've noticed over the last number of years, John and, and everyone here is, as we, uh, we talk about labor. You know, if we've looked every year to raise, make, you know, raise some salaries, we've had to raise healthcare. You take those, that increase and we've had to cut elsewhere. And so it's getting harder and harder, like John said, there is not a lot of, there's not a lot of fat there anymore. Now, in public works, you know, one of the things that is, I don't know how to phrase it, but without, without having an extra man in twenty-two. We've got a labor cost we can recoup in our budget. And, and that's significant.
That's significant. Yep, so, so again, you know, we don't know what all the departments are, are gonna, gonna need, gonna want, that kinda thing. That's where those meetings and, and we gotta do multiple meetings, I'll do it, I mean, if there's a department that wants to talk quite a bit and go through some of the options or needs help. That's what we're here for, so.
Well, I would certainly advocate to meet with you at this next meeting in person, I don't know how the other department has to feel, but.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I think that's a way to do it.
I think if we can coordinate, obviously everyone's schedule is different, um, and then we respect that. So if you have to meet at night or something, that's no big deal, but we can, we can come here, talk to you and maybe you or whatever. And then at five o'clock, somebody else comes in, I'll stay here for the evening, I don't care. So that kinda thing can be arranged, and if we have to do it over a couple of days, if I get to bring in a couple of my team members to help, that's fine too. So we can, we can do whatever you need us to do. Uh, but I think that's important, because it's not for me to make policy decisions at that time, so, so make sure, I wanna be clear on that. I'm not gonna say you can't, if you wanna, uh, uh, a piece of equipment or you wanna raise your salaries by five percent. I can't say no to that, I'm not gonna say no to that, but I'm gonna present it then accordingly, so you know about it. That you can make decisions on that.
That garbage, Rick, I think we'll have to really be looking at that, uh, you know, like we always sort of billing extra for the apartments, condos. You know, that type of thing.
That's going away, that part of that's.
Yeah, so much like, so much for three yard dumpster, six, two year, or for one yard dumpsters, times three, uh, you know what I'm saying? We had that, so that money's not gonna be there.
Right, sounds like what John's saying, it's gonna come off of our.
It'll come off the garbage end of the.
The garbage special.
It's not gonna come off the levy, it's gonna come off the property.
Garbage is not a levy right now, so what that'll do is your, your special charge will still capture all of the costs that you have for garbage. It's just whatever you pay.
Yeah.
So, so if it's a hundred and twenty now and it's going down to eighty or whatever it is, that special charge will match it, just like it matches it now. So you won't get the benefit in the levy, I guess that was my point originally. That forty thousand dollar benefit, oh, hey, we can spend it on something, no, it doesn't work that way, it's not on the levy to begin with. It's on a special charge, so on your tax bill, that special charge will be reduced, so your tax bill will go down.
So we're, you know, outside of maybe setting up some salaries, cause you're gonna probably have, have to process some for. These sofas or, you know, collection, you know what I'm saying, kinda like, I think it was in your letter, yeah, I mean, like, uh.
That's still discussing about that, but I know, I know which way I would like to go, but wait that for a meeting.
But you guys not gonna get a sofa fitting into one of those dumpsters, so I mean, there's gonna have to be some sort of outlet, you know? And you have to be some sort of collection.
Well, that's something we'll have to look at the next, uh, public works committee meeting, I think, is dive back into. You know, the details on that.
We, we know for sure we're going with that, that's step number two now, is to figure out the large items.
Correct.
Cause otherwise, otherwise.
That, that'll be on the next agenda anyhow.
Otherwise, right now, it'd be just basically what, what we're paying the contractor to pick stuff up.
And any additional cost.
And then, and then, and then, so then you know that that's the rate you could charge out to, uh, residential's, cause you're not doing it for commercial anymore.
Exactly.
Right?
That's correct.
They're contracting themselves. So that number's definitely gonna go down, which is what would you.
So I think the other question that still dangles out there is the ambulance. Is it, are we gonna take the philosophical position that it's, we're okay with it operating as a loss?
To be fair to the ambulance, though, I think we gotta remember changes were just made and hopefully that'll turn around.
That settled, was the twenty-two per cap settled?
Yeah, we've ordered on it, it's, it's. We're just waiting for everybody to sign their contracts.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-two, yeah.
And I think Joel met with all of the municipalities now.
So, so we are.
Yeah.
I'm ready as a.
It's, it's still, it's still.
No, they're gonna bring it up, and they're, you know, they're building into the increase for the following.
Right here.
Well, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
For, for twenty twenty-one, yeah, it'll be.
Twenty-one budget, you had about eighty, eighty thousand dollars levy to the ambulance. So this would start at the expectation that would be the same, that's what's in the numbers that I presented.
Yeah, but actually it should be less though, cause they're raising.
Yeah, when you go through the budget. Yeah.
Did, I mean, did Rome sign on with this? I mean, that's huge, did they?
Haven't heard yet.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything on, on anybody's, anything yet. You know, they could turn this all down and go to Rapids, but we also, if you look at that letter, the letter said that Rapids letter says they do not want to. Take on anymore, they can't, they haven't, they haven't got.
They're running on overtime now, they can't afford it.
They can't afford it.
So a lot of unknowns, obviously, that will directly tie to this, but that's why we're getting started early. Be able to react to this with plenty of time. And then, yeah, the, the rest of the, the schedule is gonna follow the statutory requirements of giving a meeting notice. And then adopting sometime in, in November. Like, we're, we're in December last year, we don't wanna wait that long, so, two in November.
With the non lapsing and the capital outlay accounts, is that a decision we should probably make this?
I don't think so, I mean, that's more of an accounting type decision.
I just wonder, cause they're, you know, with the, it's a significant amount of money that's in there.
Are you talking about changing it to like what we talked about? No, I don't think we're ready to do that, I think we, we gotta. I think you gotta wait till you're closer to twenty-three, twenty-four budget to do that, but I think you should start thinking about it. See which way you wanna go, that's a major decision to stop doing that and go into borrowing.
And then I wanna. And like, for instance, I guess what I'm thinking about is money that's in there for the garbage truck we're not buying.
Oh, yes, that could be at any time, at any meeting you could say, reallocate that to something else, either in a non lapsing. Or I don't know what the plan.
Well, we did agree, I think there's like two hundred and twenty, two hundred and three thousand in our account. Uh, about half of it's going for the city hall project that you guys voted on, so that's earmarked for that. And then, um. We have the other part of it that we can take a look at and, um. And all five, one of the things I wanna present in the budget is to take a look at a new cat end loader. Or John Deere end loader over the next year or two with that other half the money, that's something I'm gonna promote, but. Obviously something the council's gotta consider if they think that makes some sense.
And then if you do sell the, the garbage trucks, you'd want that revenue going into the non lapsing as well, so you can.
That'd come back to that type of thing, yeah.
And then you can redistribute it, any, anything in non lapsing, you can redistribute at your discretion by formal resolution, so. At any time.
Get that down to a science, don't we?
So. So if I just said, okay, I don't have any capital outlay expenditures, um, but I needed a squad car. Forty-five thousand dollars roughly that I need and I wanna borrow for it.
Yep.
So where does the borrowing come from? In debt, debt service, or do I have to allow for it in my budget? Cause really, what's the difference?
It depends if, and why it depends, it depends what council would wanna do with that forty-five thousand dollar debt service. So forty-five, let's just say it was due in, in one year, let's just make it easy. Obviously it won't, cause that wouldn't qualify, but let's say forty-five thousand was a debt service. You could levy for that and increase your levy by that somehow, so let's just say you did that through eight. And forty-five thousand was due principal and interest on line thirteen of the levy limit worksheet, you could increase it by forty-five thousand dollars. Any debt that you take out post two thousand five, that is general obligation, principal and interest paid can be increased. And your taxes would increase that by that much. So that's one way, then you wouldn't have to, to do that. The fire department loan, for example, that was not done, so what that's, what that comes out of their fund. And they transfer money into the debt service, uh, option two, there's no, there's a pro and con to both ways. It's, at, at the end of the day, it's the same, it's just, do you wanna levy it there and then have them pay it out of their line items, or do you wanna just directly levy it? It's, it's just a.
What's the con to directly leveling?
Taxes go up. That's the con.
Depending on the amount they suppose it.
Yep, I mean, you wouldn't wanna buy over every little project like that, what you'd wanna do is you'd wanna say, okay, you're doing forty-five, you're doing two hundred together. Here's the, the non lapsing, we're gonna fund fifty percent of it, the other fifty percent we're gonna borrow, that's the decisions that'll, you'll eventually be making.
So we make our expenditure restraint, though, that's.
And that's the other aspect you can't lose sight of, because when you start increasing like that, like buying stuff like that. Or increasing your budget, it, it could have a negative effect on the expenditure restraint, then you'll be seventy thousand in a hole, so. It's a game, you gotta kinda stay in, in the lanes, so, or we're working to keep track of all that for you. By the time we get to November, you'll know where you're at, and unless you're gonna borrow a bunch, you're gonna be. Kind of the process, again, you guys got anything else, you guys, something different, different strategy, even if it's beyond tonight, just let us know. But the, the whole goal is to keep, keep you more updated and, and, and then make, make a better experience for the department heads as well. Instead of just having, just a report back and there's a little bit more thought process into it. And, and really, that's what it's about, is the department heads, who really own the budget and own this process. Um, it shouldn't necessarily be you, you're just the policy decision makers, setting a guide and setting a, an approach you wanna take. And then ultimately a levy that authorized.
Have all the department heads been notified?
I got an email for the other two.
No, I. It's those that aren't present, making sure that.
I got one for Mike and Joel, okay.
I mean, really, the, 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 other than the, the categorizing it, which if they don't wanna do that, I can help through that while we're sitting here in person. It doesn't have to be something they do, same, same with you, but if. You know, the, the, the date of when it comes to me is flexible, so I just do the fifteenth. You guys can make that decision. Or if the department's need, yeah, obviously it's good to have a date, but if, I think that's the kinda the latest, I wouldn't wanna go any later than that. Maybe a week or something like that, but you, if we go too far, and I know we're way ahead of last year, but I don't wanna go too far, cause I want enough time. It takes a lot of time for us to do this, and especially if we're meeting, there might be some back and forth that we need to do. And I want that all taken care of before we meet again, and then we're just ahead of the game, so.
Go have some numbers by then.
I hope so.
And that's pretty.
Biggie.
Yeah.
And that'll be a big, we have to just be patient and wait for, cause we can't do anything about that, so we need to know. You know, if there's a major issue, if somebody drops off, that will impact the budget significantly. And that'll be one of those things that we'll just have to talk about on that meeting and say, we do. So.
Is there something you can put together so that the two that aren't here know what you're expecting from them when you meet?
Yeah, I can send an email, maybe I'll prepare an email tonight when I get back and just, uh, or tomorrow morning and just say.
Something in general.
We're kinda looking at being a little bit ahead, I mean, it's a lot earlier than normal, so I think some departments might be a little. But, you know, and, and then I'll let them know that we're gonna meet sometime, you know, late September, and if there's scheduling issues, we can work around that. I mean, I can meet early October or whatever, we got some time. Um, and critical departments, obviously, the big ones that, that could have a major impact. Um, we'll just have to wait and see when that, that information comes in, or in your case, I'll just set an appointment right now or in the next week or something like that. To say, this is the day we're gonna talk about it. But there's a lot of work that has to happen prior to that meeting, so, you know, that's why for every department, so we'll work around everybody's schedule. But I think a fifteenth is a good goal, and it gives us a little bit of wiggle room, and if you, if done earlier, great, get a jump start, so.
Nice, nice job, John.
Questions?
Not so much on that, I think that, that sounds good, on the workhorse of metal.
Yeah.
Trying to think, you know, obviously get it started for next year, but I'd like to explore that sooner than later to get that going. The payroll. And Joanie done.
Prepare up.
On that one, for payroll.
Yeah, well, there's a workhorse payroll module now that. Might solve the.
Cause that might be as simple as me inputting the data in the workhorse.
It is just as simple as that.
As simple as that.
The, the, the workhorse, as you have right now, you, you, you have the payroll, don't you?
Well, I think that it's gonna, it's not gonna be so easy, but really, because it's like, you know. What I think I know what you do, like what we do right now is that they do submit sewer and water. Okay, so basically, uh, they, those, that, that hourly gets turned into, charged out to a due.
Right, directly to the due to.
Due to's.
That's the part we gotta change.
Yeah, okay, so if you want to change that, that's definitely doable, but you know, you have to set up. In, in your general ledger, in the water and sewer accounts, all these salary accounts.
Correct.
Plus all the FICA accounts.
Correct.
Order for this to work.
That new payroll module that they came out with.
Well, that is.
Allow that to just happen.
Well, you could do it now, it'll just happen now, it's just.
But I mean, they have a new one where Rick can input the.
Oh, I see.
I see, I don't think it's gonna, that's not gonna correct what you, what you need, though.
Well, it'll, it won't change, cause it's available now, it's just, he can do it, and then it flows in instead of, I don't know, I, I am not familiar.
Um, I don't believe it, I'll have to look at that, but no, I don't, I don't believe that for a second, I, I think it's gonna have, you're gonna have to set your general ledger. Of to accommodate the salaries and fringe social security retirement, that's gonna have to be done.
Amount is known, cause it goes into that due to, due from in total, cause we have to clear that, cause right, right now, if I ran a report of your due to, due froms are not in balance because of that and about four other things. But the salary that goes to those lines, you're right, you have to set up accounts.
Yeah.
And when, the distribution in your payroll has to be switched from that due to account.
Right, directly to the ledger.
Correct.
And then do it, you have to have, you have to have that, yeah. So otherwise.
We'll work to it.
But we're, yeah, what we're doing is, is then turning around and basically writing a check, writing a check, and then you have your, uh, where you charge, actually charge out the expense accounts, and then you credit that due to, the due thing, you know, so.
So, so that, the way you're doing it now is not wrong, I just wanna make sure that's clear. It's just what you, you probably should be doing is monthly making that journal entry. So we do it once a year, and it's usually after the end of the year. We'll make an entry and we'll credit your expense accounts of public works, and we'll debit your expense accounts in water sewer.
We're not seeing it monthly as we run.
Not seeing it monthly, so what you can do is keep it exactly how you have it, but then every month, you'd have to have a recurring journal entry doing that. There'll just be another journal entry you have to do.
Yeah, well then.
Every month, otherwise it wouldn't work, so.
Yeah.
So the, the best way and the most common way I see with workhorse clients is the distribution goes directly there.
Yeah, so like the six hundred, uh, six oh five, six ten, all of those are gonna have to have a, uh, wages and sal, well, has kinda like a wages and salaries right now, but it would be the retirements.
That only is a big deal, I mean, it would be a little bit of work, but it's not, it would eliminate a journal entry that we have to make and, and, or you have to make monthly.
Yeah.
So it's just automating the process.
Be the right way to go, but we got some work to do here.
Yep.
So, well, if it's an awful election year, maybe I can. Cause otherwise.
Piece cake, Joe.
You can do it.
Gets into, that's what we got.
Into election year.
That's what we got John for, and his team, now.
Well, you can certainly, you can certainly be the preacher man, and I can be sitting in the pew and I can go in one ear and out the other if it's during election year. Well, we'll try to, we'll try to.
Well, we'll accommodate this so that, uh, we're not gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, we agreed, we gotta make it easy on you, cause I, I know we got that.
Yeah, we, we can help you out, and we can get workhorse on the phone, I can be here and we can, we'll take care of it.
It won't be any hanging chats.
Joe, you're right, it'll be fine.
I'll get it fixed, see, I'll get it, I'll get it fixed, I'll guarantee you that, that, then, then, then the bitch, then the bitch is not gonna be there no more. Then, then bitch is gonna have to move to somebody else, so, we'll get her fixed.
Sure, I'm glad this isn't being recorded.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else?
What did I, what did I, what did I say?
Nice job, John.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Yeah, we've got, uh, donations, summer's conference string, women, um, there was one thing I got from the league. They're having a, uh, I guess if you had new officials, conference, number. Anybody wants?
Would be interested in going.
It's like a two day thing.
No. We'll be fishing.
If you all fish though.
No, it's more line, more bait, never get fished though.
More beer.
Not really, not when I got the grandkids. Full straight line then.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
So did we decide that we're moving committee meetings to the ninth, for sure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't respond to that, because I kinda had a conflict on the night, but I thought I can change my conflict if everybody else wants to do it, so. We just started five o'clock in the night.
At the ninth, five o'clock, I'm scheduling with Larry, the Public Works Committee at five, and then, well, the other ones.
Sent him in. Yeah, rather than sitting like Brian said, rather than have to run them fifteen different nights, just get them all knocked out in the same night, again, just move the night, it just works easier.
So no, no more triple letters? Or is it gonna be a triple?
It'll still be.
Yeah.
Two more in one night.
I missed it.
There's still the ways and means.
Chum capped out on this meeting, you guys are under, you warmed up, yeah, that was the one.
It's a government one-on-one, bringing, open government one-on-one. Oh, September tenth, on Friday, it will pack up.
I'll be fishing.
Mr. Kiran?
Yeah.
Are you looking for, are you looking for a motion to allow anyone who would like to go to, allow them to attend? Bring it up now.
Well, I guess I thought I'd just bring it up if anybody's interested, but it doesn't seem like anybody's.
Okay. I'm not, but if anybody wants to go, if you have something, you, yeah, or in October, we've got our, uh, league meeting twos.
I'll bring it up since I got in the mail.
You good timing or what?
Oh, one other thing, I guess it could probably fall under, under this. No, that's for, um, we're, was talking, uh, about the retirement, yes, that's a couple of retirements. You know, in the past, we've done, like, watches for the guys.
Usually the mayor's taking care of that.
No, necessarily.
In the past.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I.
When, when Sheila retired, she took care of her own, so.
That worked well.
Had a Rolex.
But I'm just saying, I.
Women love that. No problem with.
And we've been, and we've had a couple that weren't missed too, that didn't, you know, nothing happened with them.
Sounds like school just. I know, I was gonna bring up, uh, Dan, that, you know, Mark retired, and I asked Mark, you know, what he'd like to do, he says, Rick, I don't wanna have any big thing. And he, but he almost didn't wanna have anything, I said, well, how about if at least we have, you know, a little bit more of a formal grill out, you know? Lodge with the guys, he said, I could do.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys are okay with that, I, I was thinking of trying to pick a day with Mark and then, uh, have kinda like an actual retirement, you know, grow out with him down there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't think we'd spend a whole lot of money there.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Joe's got it.
It's just that, wait till somebody throws their guess for a lot.
Great for we're.
Well, I don't know, it'll be happening soon before the big items.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it's gonna be an influx, okay to buy something for Mark, or I don't, I don't really know what, what the protocol's been for someone that retires, you, you do anything?
That's kinda where, question earlier today, and that's kinda what it, what it prompted, prompted us, because it was, it's been done in the past, and then it kinda hasn't been.
Tell me the way you said.
And there really isn't any, like in a handbook, for instance, there's really no guidance at all. So. What I've done is just spent an internal. I just did an internal mountain for, for two of them that we've had.
Right, did you buy him a gift, a gift type of thing, could you use departmental funds for that?
Yeah. Someone's discretionary fund, someone's donated from the guys too.
Okay.
A little bit of both.
Okay.
But if you send an email, Mark's come over and done work for us, we'll be proud of it.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't, just, you know, really talking about parties, I was talking more about, like the recognition.
Recognition.
I think it's something that should be consistent, I mean, and I don't know, that's kinda important, you know.
But I don't know, but something that we have to have. And we have to have an, in writing and guidelines and, you know, already draw a line, someone's been here five years and they retire.
Somebody's got forty years or five years.
Yeah, or thirty years or.
Yeah, Mark's been here, I think it's been thirty-five years for Mark, you know, when I.
So he would go by now.
Yeah.
So, so, but I see a lot in, in, what I run into is looking at audits and audits and things like that, is a lot of municipalities have done away with that formally, just because discrimination issues, because inconsistent issues. And what they do is exactly what you said, is they just pass the hat around, and that's what they get.
Pretty much what happens in the mill.
That's what we do too.
You guys, they put a card out.
Yes.
Leave some money in.
Yep. Like, like money and buy something.
Isn't a bad way of doing it either.
And it's totally off the city's.
That way, that way you can, a person that gets that money can do whatever they want with it.
Right. Or you can buy something, I mean, it doesn't have to be money, it can be, yeah, go buy a gift, where we got a hundred bucks, okay, buy something for a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
But typically, that doesn't elevate itself with the fact that we, as the city, are recognizing that retirement, you know, the recognition thing. Those things tend to be in-house with.
Correct.
Right, you know, we're the, you know, we're the overseers of that retirement. I think we should be doing something, you know, doesn't have to be outrageous, but, and Sean, you probably nailed it right down, you're doing it from your own department.
Me, I've, I've got no problem, you don't donate money out for something like that for a retirement. Been doing it for forty-six years, only one I didn't put money into was my own.
I did just even it out to fifty bucks.
Yeah. That was that good. Yeah, I don't know how you wanna handle it.
Right. And I guess.
I'm all for doing something, but I don't know how you wanna handle it.
I guess the other thing I suppose I could probably just bring it up to, so, as long as don't be spills, be, it's, uh, the, the next council meeting would be giving Kenny Moody a key to the city.
Oh, okay.
Service, so, that's kind of what.
Got you thinking about it.
Around to the rest of.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, you know, forty, was it forty-three years?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a lot, a lot of time.
And, and when you consider it, yeah, I was gonna say, when you consider it's a part-time capacity.
That's quite something.
Yeah.
Well, in Mark's case, I was just gonna have a grill out with, with the guys.
Yeah.
And that's all he.
And it sounds like that's what he wants.
Yeah.
And then maybe buy him a small little gift and, don, donations from some of the guys, and maybe add a little bit of money from public works and, and get him something maybe for golf or whatever he likes.
Yeah.
Get him a white duck truck and put a goosebumps sticker on it.
Getting that gold, gold shovels.
Right, yeah, get him a golf cart.
That, that fifth shovel you mentioned, Mike, I'll give him that fifth one.
That's one that has slivers on the handle, right?
We could release that through one more goal.
Yeah. Right.
All right.
You want you to adjourn?
In motion, are you a second?
I got.
Do a journal in favor.
Hi.
Hi.